And see, we got the entire Brady bunch with us this morning. All council members are present. Good to be back with you, council. The first item on our agenda for this study session is to review the agenda for our January 25 regular council meeting. So if you could please look at that document. Mr. Brady, I'm not aware that we have any staff presentations on anything on this agenda. Is that correct?
Mayor, we do have, would like to kind of brief council on a few items just because I think from the caption, they may not be as obvious. So there is item 5A, the contract working with the county on that. That may be, there's kind of a backstory to that one. And then also, Mr. McVeigh is here to just give a little bit of background also on the Benedictine cahoots improvements. Maybe council would like to get an update on that. So we do have, we are prepared to make, just brief presentations on both of those, Mayor, when you're, when you're ready.
Sure. Council, should we just jump to those presentations? Mr. Luna, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I did have question on the cahoots and the Benedictine arrangement. And I'd just like to get updated what's going on with that. It's a real positive thing for our community, and I'm looking forward to the expansion of Benedictine University and the partnership between Benedictine and Cahoots. So yeah, I would welcome a presentation on that.
Thank you. I think that's agenda item 5C. So council, that's another question. Why don't, why don't we just, Mr. Brady, give Mr. McVeigh to update us on, on that
Morning, Mayor and Council. Jeff McVeigh, manager of Downtown Transformation. And today I was here to give you a quick update on where we stand with the Cahoots at Benedictine University project, as well as a quick overview of a proposed resolution related to the JOC, job order contract, maximum contract amounts. So to start, I wanted to, to remind council of what our agreement was with Benedictine University and Cahoots. It's been, unfortunately, it's been almost sixteen, fourteen months now since council approved this back in December of 2019. But if you remember, there was a lease amendment to the Benedictine lease agreement, the third amendment, that committed the city to design and construct approximately 10,000 square feet of space within Gillette Hall at 225 East Main Street, which is a city-owned facility that we leased to Benedictine. That build out was to support the innovative educational partnership between Cahoots and Benedictine University to create the Cahoots Institute at Benedictine. Now, that would create educational opportunities and entrepreneurship for students of Benedictine, as well as creating a commercial coworking space for Cahoots to operate and help be part of our, our innovation district ecosystem. In addition to the student, the student curriculum that they, that they would be generating, they'd also create about 300 jobs within the city of Mesa, as well as holding weekly entrepreneurship and innovation events for the general public. It was a 10-year commitment from both Cahoots and Benedictine. As part of that third amendment, the city committed to a total budget of $2 million, which is, which included about $1.5 million for the, the construction of the space. That $1.5 million, when we were in preliminary design and having preliminary estimates completed, we were confident we could deliver the program for that one, $5.5 million and use the, the job order contract delivery method. Once we got into final design and actually getting construction estimates, we realized that we could not deliver the base program that we had avail, that we had committed to for the $2 million, or for that $1.5 million in construction budget. We went through several, several rounds of value engineering, and we are able to present today a, a overall budget of $2.15 million, which is an increase of $150,000 in total, which also results in an increase in the construction budget to $1.7 million. There was a little bit of savings on the design side that allowed us to, to increase the construction budget by $200,000 with an increase of only $150,000 to the total budget. Now, that does lead us to the issue, though. We have, we had decided to use the job order contract delivery method, and as council's limitations are today, $1.5 million is the maximum amount that, that the city manager has the authority to, to enter into for job order contracts. And often, JOCs are the, the most efficient way for us to deliver certain projects. And so in addition to the amendment, the amendment to the Cahoots lease agreement, we have also included a, it's item 5D, I believe, an updated resolution for the job order contracts delivery that would allow the city to enter into job order contracts that are above $1.5 million but under $2 million with specific council approval through a resolution for those, those, those contracts. So the resolution would set the mechanism for council to allow future job order contracts that exceed $1.5 million, as well as specifically approving a job order contract for the Cahoots project at $1.7 million. As a quick overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McVeigh. Council, questions regarding this? Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, JOCs may be the most efficient way, probably for staff, rather than go to RFP, but is it the most effective and most costly, cost-effective method? I'm hesitant on increasing the, the JOC amount for manager Brady to approve. 1.5 million is quite a bit, and to be able to go to 1.2. I know that, you know, you'd still have council oversight, but I think there's something to be said about RFP. Now, I know it's a, it can be a pain to go out to RFP, but I think competition and bidding can help bring our costs down. Am I missing something there?
Mayor and council, if I could also just clarify something that Jeff just said. It really doesn't increase the city manager's authority. What it does is, is give council flexibility between 1.5 million and $2 million. And so Chris couldn't do it. It has to come back to council every single time in that new range, if you will, for a resolution. So it's really giving council additional authority.
Okay. I like that part. But on the, on the JOC versus RFP, Chris?
Yeah, well, and Beth's here to talk about it. And just remember, part of this is a factor of inflation. When we set the limit at 1.5, that was three, four years ago. And Beth can tell you that the 1.5 is no longer $1.5 million anymore.
And not in the construction.
And especially in the construction inflation. So frankly, we do need to adjust the 1.5, and we probably will be coming to council sometime in the future to suggest that needs to be increased. It, it does allow us to, we competitively bid these JOC contracts, and we do, do go back and compare the JOC contracts with other contracts that we may go through the, the other procurement process. So, but we find that what we save as far as time and having the JOC contractor there at the beginning does create a much more efficient process. Let me, I know Beth is very well informed in this. Let me have her weigh in on this, too.
So, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, just a brief history and background, because I know we have some, some newer members. Back in the early 2000s, the state changed the procurement code for construction projects, and they gave us a toolbox of methodologies to use. There is still the traditional design bid build, which we use quite frequently. And then there are alternative delivery methods called, and the two that we tend to use are construction manager at risk and job order contracting. Those two methods still go through an RFP process. They allow us to go out and select based on qualifications. The job order contracts for, for the smaller projects, and at the time, in the early 2000s, the limit was set in the legislation of $1 million, except as otherwise approved by the governing authority, which is you. So, but what we have found 20 years later is a million doesn't really cover very much. The job order contractors are required to bid all the major subs and materials, and if we don't like the numbers, we terminate negotiations and go on to number two. So there is still a bidding component to this, and there still is an RFP process. It's just a different methodology. Where we tend to use construction manager at risk and job order contracting is when we have a fairly complex project, like the project at Benedictine. Benedictine is still an operating facility. It is an old building, and I will tell you, from the very first project we did down there several years ago, we find all kinds of interesting things when we go into the walls of that building. I am concerned if we do go out and do a low bid on this project, we will have substantial change orders, and we will extend our schedule much longer than Benedictine and Cahoots would like to have to open that facility. So this way, the contractor's been aware of it, they've been at the table with us working on design, they've had an opportunity to inspect the building and understand the building, and they will go in far ahead of a, a low bid contractor at this point.
That'll work. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Beth.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Luna?
Yes, Mayor, I, I just wanted to voice that I will be in support of this. I think, I think it was sometime late spring last year when, when Jeff and Kevin came to me and spoke to me about the increase of the costs associated with the expansion of Benedictine and Cahoots. And that was last year, and so based on what Beth is saying and what, what Jim Smith is saying, I think that the onus is on us. So I think as council, we can go ahead and move to approve this. We don't want to delay it. We certainly don't want any more additional costs going up as we proceed supporting this project. Benedictine has been a good partner. It is a city, city building, and so I'm comfortable supporting this as we move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. Council, other comments? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, why are we waiting 14 months now? We couldn't start cycling back 14 months. What's, what's transition?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, to, to be honest, it was that, that was the amount of time that we spent trying to value engineer the project into that $1.5 million construction budget.
Jeff mentioned about how it was a million.
Right. We, we, when we first, our first budget estimate came in approximately $900,000 over our, it was $2.4 million. So we were able to, to value engineer it down quite a bit. Honestly, even at this $1.7 million construction budget, we had to decrease scope from what we had initially committed to. So this is a, it was, it was a long and arduous effort to try and get to this, this, this number and be able to also then to make sure that our partners in Benedictine and Cahoots were going to be comfortable with the, with the, with the program that we would be able to deliver at $1.7 million.
All right. Well, it just circles back to one of my points earlier, is if we can move a little faster and, and that way we can hold down our construction costs, I think is important. But then again, as, as Mr. Luna's indicated, I do support Benedictine in the build out. Some of us have spent time in that building back in its early days, and it does need rehab. And I agree, Beth, that when you opens up some walls, you never know what you're going to find structurally or whatever. But regardless, thank you. Mayor, if, if I have your permission, it maybe Jeff could switch gears on 4J, the, after you're done with these questions on this topic, the federal building?
HP.
Or the post office, old post office?
Sure, Mr. Freeman. I think we're on, we're on a, striking a theme today of buildings that you and I walked into when we were children, right? So, yeah, that federal, I, I can't speak for everybody, but I know I was born in that Benedictine building. But Mr. Freeman and Ms. Duff, Ms. Spilsbury is way too young to have been born there. So you're right, that, that building has got some, I, I totally understand the problematic nature of rehabbing a building of that, of that vintage. And I, I do know that Mr. Brady has been very personally involved in, in the value engineering side of this. When, when the bids came in and they were, we realized that we'd estimated too low. I, I do know that there's been a lot of staff time and attention dedicated to trying to figure out how to do this as cost effectively as possible. So I, I appreciate the staff time that has gone into this to, to keep this project moving forward, even though it has taken longer than, than any of us would want. But to me, it speaks to the, the very exciting atmosphere we have downtown, where we have, truly have an innovation district that is coming to life, and it's anchored by higher education. The ASU building is a great example of that, but, but very much in the, in the same way that the Ben, the Ben U and Cahoots partnership fits into that model, and it's very strategic and part of this plan. So I'm, I'm excited to see this project go forward. Mr. Council, the Councilmember Duff, go ahead. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Duff, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with all of this men said. One of my concerns also is since it's been a little while since we've done the estimates and stuff like that, is construction costs have risen again over the past year, and I think we'll do good to be able to hold on to this. But I also want to recognize Cahoots and the work that they have done in the valley, but also in Mesa with the small businesses during our carers program. And it's been significant, and we look forward to working with them, continue, you know, after, after the carers, we're going to continue these projects. And Jeff, I was wondering if you could also just review for the public what Cahoots obligation is in the lease as far as what they're providing? I guess this lease is with Benedictine, but there are obligations in this build out?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor Duff, the, there is, our lease agreement is with Benedictine University, but it does establish the, the requirements that Cahoots has to follow and, and through annual reporting through Benedictine to the city. So if I, actually, I'll go back a couple slides here, give you this overview. So in addition to the, the, the educational partnership, so that, that includes the expectation that 80 to 100 students will go through the programming with, with Cahoots, as well as Cahoots generating a minimum of 300 new jobs and/or businesses within the city of Mesa over the 10-year period for, that the lease is in effect. In addition, Cahoots is responsible for the all FF and E costs, so all furniture fixtures and equipment that go into the building. In addition to that, Cahoots has committed to essentially weekly programming for the public and entrepreneurship events. So that could be as, as simple as, you know, how to do QuickBooks, or, or it could be bringing mentors in on how to scale up a business. So in addition, really what Cahoots is doing is helping to, to create a, an essential element to our innovation district. When we were, we were here presenting the, the studios project, one of the things that we mentioned, the studios is not a coworking space. It is intended to be a space where you, you, you bring your ideas and you ideate, but you have to graduate to someplace. And, and an obvious place to graduate, it would be to a Cahoots, into a coworking space while you build your business, and then graduate from, from the Cahoots space into a, a brick and mortar of your own.
Thank you very much, Jeff. I agree, this is a, a very essential component to the innovation district that we're building and building the entrepreneurship, which is so important to the resilience of our city. So thank you for all the work that's gone on there. I know it's been very difficult to scale this back into these figures with the amount of work that needs to be done, and I certainly approve this and look forward to its, and when, when can we look forward to the opening?
I am sure that Kevin at Benedictine and Jenny and Odina at Cahoots, who are listening on this, are, are asking the same question. We are, we are in final design right now. As soon as we complete final design, we will enter into construction phase, and we are anticipating that to take about nine, nine to 12 months for construction.
Vice Mayor, it's kind of the same, same answer I give you all the time, 2022.
It's the answer to so, to all of our projects. So if anybody ever asks, when is something going to be done, it's 22. And it's a, a great time in order to kind of recover from where we are and, and really catapult to what we can do. So thank you.
I guess the good news is that now 2022 is just, that's just next year. Not that big a deal anymore. Things, things are happening. We are making progress. So thank you. Council, other, before we move on to another agenda item on Mondays, any, any additional questions about the Ben U Cahoots agenda item? All right, Mr. Brady?
I think, did Councilmember Freeman asked a question about the historic post office? And I didn't know, Councilmember Freeman, was there a specific question or just an overview? I wasn't, I didn't quite hear.
I think we have agenda item 4J, Chris, on, on Monday's agenda, is the pre-construction contract, the C-MAR contract for the, for the post.
Was there a specific question, Mayor, or just general update? That's what I was asking.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
General update, just an overview.
So, good morning again. Item 4I, I believe, is the historic post office, 4J, historic post office, construction manager at risk, pre-construction services. Sometime back, we put an architect on board to design this project. There's actually bond funding from two bond programs, as we've been looking at how to utilize the building most effectively. We are currently sitting at about 30% design. We are adding the contractor at this point because we want to get some confirmation of our cost estimates, make sure we're under budget, and that we can do what we want to do. The building is going to be designed for open community space. Parks Rec Community Facilities is looking at the building for provide, allowing community access and community activities. I think they've looked at a variety of potential banquet opportunities or meeting opportunities for the community and different organizations in the community. We're currently looking at starting construction this fall, provided we can, the contractor agrees that we've got it in under our estimates. If not, we're going to be looking at what we have to do to get it under the estimates. And it's about a year-long construction, so it would open in the fall of '22. Kind of put that in perspective with the other projects we currently have. The Plaza has to open for Mary Main this fall. Innovation Studios after the first of the year, the first quarter. ASU will be turning over in the first quarter, but they have to do all the audiovisual work and the tech work in the building. So probably more towards summer for ASU of 2022. And the federal building would be coming in at the end of 2022. So that's how they all fit together in the puzzle.
So Mayor, we're suggesting council get some really sharp scissors for all the ribbon cuttings that are going to take place in 2022, so. But maybe, Jeff, talk a little, because there, maybe expand a little more on the programming and talk about the second floor a little bit.
Mayor, council, in addition to the, the, the build out of the space to provide nice, flexible event space, including the catering kitchen, new restrooms, there will be a build out on the second floor to convert some open space into offices, as well as some conference room space. That's where we'll have an office for the Parks Recreation Commercial Facilities, person who will be essentially managing the space, as well as offices available for city staff and potentially to be able to locate downtown Mesa Association staff, too, as well.
Mr. Freeman, is that?
Yep. Spot on. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add, I can't help but add that, that I have walked through that building with, with some of our council, and I've seen the renderings of what this building is going to look like. And man, I'm really excited. For those of us who, who have a, an affection for downtown Mesa and for its history, this building is, you know, there's no, nothing more exciting than seeing this building come online, and, and it's really going to be very much appreciated by the community when it's available to us, of course, in 2022, right?
Everything in 2022.
Council, I, I know we also, Mr. Brady also indicated we had some staff, an update perhaps on agenda item 5A before we moved to that. Any other, any other questions on anything we've talked about to this point? Mr. Brady, you want to talk about 5A?
Yeah, I'll have Beth just go a brief, kind of explain the background behind this item. Thank you.
So, good morning. Kim Fallback had hoped to be here this morning for this item and is unable to make it, so she called in the second string, string here, so hopefully I can give you all the information you need. The city currently owns a parcel that is a parking lot at 240 North Pasadena, which is south of university and east of North Center. You've probably driven by it many times. We acquired the parcel back in 84, 85 as part of downtown redevelopment projects, and we then entered into agreements with some of the developers that were building buildings on the parcels adjacent to it, where they would lease parking spaces from us. To that, so what we are getting to right now is that was over 30 years ago. We entered into 30-year lease with Maricopa County, who owns the building just adjacent to the parking lot, and that is now at the point of expiration. The county contacted us, and they would like to ultimately sell that building, probably out in the 2022 range. They are currently expanding their facility kind of south of the 60, and they're thinking they will probably have that complete sometime in 2022, and then would move the staff out of this building. At that point, they want to sell the building, but they can't do it without parking space, so they would like to renew the lease, which we are presenting to you today a, a new lease, which is a 10-year lease with a five-year extension to it, so that they can potentially sell the building. And that's, that's what that lease is about. We do have leases in the other, on the same parking lot with Save the Family, United Way, and Delta Hotel, which are all adjacent to the parking lot. We do maintain the lot. The county is required to stripe their spaces and sign their spaces, and if they want to do anything else with their spaces, it requires city approval, according to the lease.
So Mayor and council, I think some of you know that the county's space is used for adult probation, and that, since I've been here, has been a great concern for many of the properties in that area, especially the hotel. And there's been a lot of efforts, I know on my part and mayors in the past, trying to persuade the county to relocate those services out of downtown Mesa. So recently, in the last year, I was contacted by the county manager's office, who indicated that they did have, they had now had, they now currently have plans to build a new facility over off their complex of, what is that, Juanita and Mesa Drive, to relocate those services there. But in order to do that, they had to have the ability to sell the property here in downtown Mesa. And as they approached me, their concern was that they would not be able to sell it or get much value for the property if they didn't have an extended term on their, on the parking that we control. So they sought, they came to us and sought this extension so that it would coincide with the sale of this property. So this was our way of supporting the move of the adult probation services out of downtown by extending this lease. Thank you.
Thank you, council. Any questions on that item? Thanks for that update, Mr. Brady. Council, any, any other questions on any item on our agenda for Monday? Mr. Thompson?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on item 5B, then Bravo. I wonder know if, two things. One is, is PD tracking any crime rates there, pre and post use of the, of the hotel for homeless shelter? And also on the, on the memo, it talks about the budget piece, on the council memo, that there was 650,000 estimated, was included in the police budget for ensuring safety and security of the hotel and the surrounding area. Is that 650, is that coming out of the same emergency solutions grant for coronavirus funds, or is that coming directly through our general, general fund?
Start with the crime?
Sure. Go ahead. Good morning, Councilmember Thompson, Detective Rain here. Yeah, that's a good question as far as the crime rate itself. And actually, what we do is every single week, we pull the statistics for the area and look at the calls for service, and we also match them up to the previous calls for service for the previous year from that same period, to see if there's an uptick or a downtick and what that might be attributed to. So we do this, and when you look at the same time period from the previous year to this year, it, it's effectively a wash as far as when there is. There is more calls for service, particularly because we have officers there that are present 24 hours a day when there previously wouldn't be. And so there's more proactivity going on. There's traffic stops and things like that are significantly higher because the officers are doing work in that area now.
And Councilmember Thompson, to get to your question about the funding source. So just a, a quick update for the city council as, as it relates to this program and what's happening in 2021. One of the things that we're doing is we're reducing the number of hotel rooms that we're actually going to be leasing from 100 to 50. We're going to try to maximize and get more use out of those particular rooms in this. The item that is on the council agenda today or, and for action on the 25th, does use, as Councilmember Thompson said, the, the federal dollars that were meant for coronavirus dollars and for this particular use. It does not, that particular funding source does not allow for security to be funded. So for us to continue the program, but also to just make absolutely certain that we're doing everything we can to keep the hotel, the participants, and the area around it, the neighbor around it, safe during this, we felt very strongly that we still need to have a police presence there. And so, yes, those funds would be coming from the general fund. We've reduced it. It's going to be a 21-hour-per-day security, and it's going to cost the city about $650,000 per year.
And how, how many officers do we have that are, that are basically committed to this location?
So currently, it's, it's an off-duty assignment. So officers, after their workday or after their, on their days off, can lottery in and pick for this assignment. And so there's 21 hours of coverage with one officer in a patrol car, providing that presence that's visible, so that there's always a presence visible when they're not there. There's, it's in the hours when people are asleep and not active.
Okay. I was just wanting to make sure we weren't pulling them from neighborhoods and other areas of the city that, that we want to make sure that we're patrolling and so forth, so.
No, sir.
Okay. That answers my question.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Luna?
Natalie, you mentioned the decrease in the space for housing our homeless population. Will we still have sufficient rooms? I know that we are under a Boise requirement. We have to provide some kind of shelter. Having the decrease, decreasing the amount of rooms, will we still have sufficient space to house our homeless population?
Yeah.
As you know, we're, you know, we have to deal with the Boise requirement.
Yes. Mayor, Councilmember Luna, thank you for asking that question. For the rest of the council, Martin v. Boise basically keeps any city from enforcing urban camping unless you have a bed facility that is available. And so even though we've reduced the number of rooms, we are still setting aside availability of beds so that we, in our police department, can continue enforcing urban camping throughout the city of Mesa.
Thank you, Natalie.
And Mayor and Council, I should also, you know, I'd like to point out, because I don't know if Council knows this, that that was a collaboration between the police department, the city prosecutor's office, and Natalie and her departments. And I think we're one of the very few cities in Arizona, in fact, the only city I know in Arizona that actually has this program up and running. So most cities actually are not enforcing their, their urban camping. So we're actually one of the very few cities that have implemented this program.
Thank you, Counsel. Other questions on this item? Mr. Freeman?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Natalie, you said a reduction in rooms. What generated that reduction? What was, what was the defining decision in that?
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. It was a combination of things. We've learned a lot during the last year on how the program works and what we really need. And so that was one reason. We know we can do more maximizing of the rooms themselves, doubling up and doing other things like that. So we're really trying to get just the most out of the rooms as possible. We're also working with our, our local nonprofits to free up other beds, like the East Valley Men's Shelter, so that we can have beds set aside just for this program and for other Mesa-based homeless individuals. So we're working to expand our inventory using existing beds and also just really highly maximizing what we're doing at the hotel. Does that answer your question?
Right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel. Other comments? I'll just add, my two cents is, I, the alternative to the model that we're using is, in order to be in compliance with, with the Boise decision, would be to go through the very problematic process of siding and approving a, a shelter in our, in the neighborhoods in our community. And I think that would be very, very difficult, and we'd get a lot, a lot of pushback on that. So I endorse the, the approach that we've been taking with, with having, as we know, some very underutilized motel rooms in this part of Mesa. It's, it's a win-win. The, the operators get some revenue. We're able to take folks who don't have a place to live and concentrate them in a place where they can get wraparound services, where they're part of the system, where we, we have a police presence to provide security for them and for the neighbors, and also to, to try to help them to progress out of homelessness. So I think it's going to be very interesting to see, over the next few months, how the federal funding portion of this evolves. The, the last aid package, COVID aid package, did include money for rental assistance and for homelessness. The current package that's being proposed by the new administration includes $350 billion for state and local government. It'll, it'll be interesting to see to what extent that money is earmarked or that we're directed to use that to assist with the homeless problem. So I'm looking forward to the next few months to see how this continues to evolve and to see what the future of the, of the approach is that we, we've started. Councilmember Spillsberry?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I'm really loving what I'm seeing with this program. I think it's great. And this actually is in my district, and so I specifically want to give my support for the police presence there. I've heard nothing but positive coming out of this, having that police presence in this area and in the neighborhood, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duff?
Yes, and I'd like to, you know, I'm in support of this. And this is a one-year lease agreement, so we can, after one year, look back, look at our figures, and kind of evaluate the program and how we're doing and how it's, you know, moving people out of homelessness. So I like that. And it's a win-win situation. We're still in a pandemic. Hotels are suffering greatly. This is a way to keep a hotel in business, who's probably struggling, and a way for us to find homes for the homeless. So I think it's a great program, and I look forward to looking back upon it in a year and seeing where we can go from here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Detective Rain, the others, folks that are involved in making this program work. Natalie, thank you for allowing it to progress, and we look forward to continuing to support it as, as things evolve. Mr. Brady, anything else from the staff perspective as far as information we would want to know about Monday night's meeting?
Mayor, I think we've covered it. Thank you very much. But we're certainly can answer any questions you have, but I think we've highlighted the ones we were prepared to talk about.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Counsel, before we move on, any other questions? Councilmember Duff? I'm sorry. Vice Mayor Duff, I'm going to get this right eventually.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that on our agenda, the, that Herb &amp; Smoke is applying for a liquor license, and that's a new restaurant in downtown Mesa. I'm excited to see, yeah, another restaurant opening up, and wanted to acknowledge their application and on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Duff. And I was excited, I finally got it right. I thought it was Urban Smoke, but it's Herb &amp; Smoke, which makes a lot more sense for the name of a barbecue restaurant than Urban Smoke. I thought perhaps it was part of the marijuana, you know, industry, but no, it's a barbecue joint. And I heard recently that downtown Mesa is the only place in the state that is opening new restaurants and new retail. And so this is a great example of that, and congratulations. I am looking forward. This is right next to Taco's Chivas and next to the Proof Bread location, and it's really turning into a, a very, very fun part of downtown Mesa. So congratulations to them and everyone involved in this. Counsel, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to the agenda for today's meeting. Item 2A is to hear a presentation and discuss an update on the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline project. Mr. Brady?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mayor and Council, we've talked about this project off and on over the last year. We spent a lot of time since we last met evaluating different alignments. This is a critical water project, a water resource project for the city of Mesa. It allows us to come into compliance with our long-term partners in the Gila River, so we've got the staff here to kind of give you a summary of where we've, what we've been able to do and, and steps going forward as we've made some decisions and have a recommendation on the alignment. So who's kicking this off? Chris? Chris Hassard is here from the Water Resources, and he'll be kicking it off.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm Chris Hassard, Assistant Director with Water Resources. Here with me today is Brian Draper, our Water Resources Advisor, and Lance Webb from Engineering. He's Deputy City Engineer. We heard a lot of talk today about exciting projects here in downtown Mesa, in this part of town, and now we want to shift the focus to the east and southeast part of the city. And we want to give you an update on results and recommendations from our alignment study for the project we're calling the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline. And as you'll see, it's a pipeline to move reused water produced at our Northwest Reclamation Plant south and tie into our existing reuse system, which is currently in operation and delivering water today to the Gila River community. And with that, we'll jump right into it.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Good on Brian Draper, Water Resources Advisor here at the city of Mesa. And it is a pleasure to come before you and meet with you at the beginning of 2021. And so I'm here to talk a little bit about our effluent exchange agreement that we do have with the Gila River Indian community. This agreement is just a small part of a landmark decision made during the adjudication of the Gila River. And so this one small component is a major portion of Mesa's water portfolio. We began delivering water, effluent, to the, to the community back in '08. And the part of this agreement is for, for example, every five gallons we give them of effluent, which is treated wastewater at our local wastewater treatment plants. Currently, that would include the Greenfield Water Reclamation Plant, which we just expanded, and the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant. And so combined, we're delivering, just to date, right around 8,100 acre feet, and we're getting back about 7,100 acre feet. But per the agreement, we can get up to 24,000 acre feet of water to be treated at our Signal Butte or Brown Road Water Treatment Plant in East Mesa, which is key for driving the economic development that's going on out there. And so to kind of go into more of the goals, I'll turn it over to Chris Hassard to kind of drive on that.
Okay. Thanks, Brian. In a minute, Lance is going to talk about the alignment study, recommendations. He's going to have all the graphics that show the details of the project, the alignment. He'll get into all the fun stuff. But first, I want to talk about why we're here and why this is important. And it all starts with the agreement. So this is a mutually beneficial agreement for both the community and the city of Mesa. On the community side, what they receive is a reliable, consistent, large quantity of reused water that they can take and receive at our existing pipe outfall, and they, they can use that for current and long-term agricultural purposes. So it's a, it's a benefit to them. On the city side, there's less we can do with the reused water without advanced treatment and, and other types of systems. But what is an advantage for the city of Mesa is that raw water for the portfolio. That's very important for us because we have not one, but two water treatment plants on the cap system, Brown Road and Signal Butte. So by receiving cap water and treating it at those plants, it gives us a lot of flexibility in terms of how we serve our customers in east and southeast Mesa. Along with that is, the other, the other benefit is, right, the economic side of the picture. We need to expand our cap portfolio in East Mesa. Right now, as we sit here today, we're okay. But in five years from now, we're seeing very aggressive development in that part of the city. And if that type of development continues, we're going to get squeezed on our water supplies, and five years from now, there's more uncertainty. So the reason we're here today and we're exploring this is it takes three years to fully design and build a project of this size and scope. And we don't want to find ourselves in a position five years from now or six years from now where we don't have a solution to expand our portfolio other than going on the open market, because that's a difficult proposition. First, there's no guarantee we can even acquire additional water resources. And second, from research we've done, acquiring this volume of water on the open market could cost upwards of $120 million, and that's just to secure those water rights. That doesn't even provide for a single drop of water. So you compare the $120 million at a minimum to acquire these type of water rights versus the upfront capital cost of doing the pipeline. We're still refining figures, but we're looking at under $100 million for that project. That's just one side of the economic story. The continuation of the economic story is probably even more compelling, which is, once we start ordering this water, if we went on the open market, the, the type of water rates we would acquire, we would have to pay for water each year at the cap going rate. Right now, that's about $213 per acre foot. On the contrary, so with a pipeline in place, the type of water we would receive and exchange from the community, those type of rates would only cost us $56 an acre foot. And the reason for that is we're only paying the energy component of the cap rate. So that's a significant benefit to our customers, because each year, when we place our cap order order, we can front-load those type of water rates. We can structure our order any way we want, and we would certainly structure our order so that we're paying $56 per acre foot rather than $213 per acre foot. So on day one, when we open up the spigot, so to speak, and put this pipeline into service, we're going to be saving over $2 million a year just on operations costs, just by the delta of the water savings. So that's very significant, and it's a huge benefit to our customers. So that's why we explored this project, and that's why we did the alignment study. And now let's get into the specifics about the alignment study, so you can see the route and you can hear a little bit about the process that we went through. So I'll turn it over to Lance. So the main goal and objective of this project is to take advantage of that exchange agreement, as was noted. The primary thing that we want to highlight here is we're taking water from our Northwest Water Reclamation Plant, and we're taking that down to the Gila River community at the turnout down there. So we obtained, we accomplished that primarily by using a combination of existing lines. There, as you can see, in the red, pink, and blue. And then we looked at alignment study, we looked at various alignments in terms of routing that from our, from the turnout there up by Val Vista and Thomas, down to the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant, where we have an existing line. So we just recently finalized that study, that alignment study. For this project, we considered several alignment options. And some of the things that we looked at that, that actually provided greater or higher rank with these alternatives were greater control for the water delivery, ease of operations, reduced risk, and lowered cost for construction and water delivery and limited construction impacts. So this is our preferred alignment that we have. It ranked best amongst the options that we looked at. It provided, first and foremost, the greatest autonomy of the options and economical advantage to constructing this option. So this is kind of where we're at now. We're in the process of finalizing a hydraulic study with this study. The main takeaway from that is we have the recommendation of a need for a pump station near the intersection of Thomas and Val Vista. And we are currently working with consultants. We'll be initiating design shortly. We anticipate that to take about 18 months, followed shortly thereafter with construction for likely about 24 months.
So with that? Thank you, Counsel. I'm, I'm sorry. Please, is there more to the presentation?
Yeah, so, you know, the, the fact that, that this line actually runs down through the town of Gilbert, we've been coordinating and working with the town of Gilbert, both our existing and where we are proposing this alignment, and working closely with them and have found some options that work. We'll continue to work with them. But with that, I'll take any, we'll take any questions that the council may have.
Thank you. Let me just, what's the estimated cost? I know this is very expensive. It's going to be, there's going to be some drawing paint and, and some traffic, you know, consternation when, with digging up these, these major roadways. But what's the, what's the projected cost? And, well, let's just start with that.
Yeah, so the preliminary estimates that we've, we've had with this is in the range of about $90 million right now.
range of about $90 million right now.
And, okay, thank you. I, I know, I know it was a big number. I wanted to get it out there, but the, but still, the, the math that you've shared with us earlier where we're paying $56 an acre foot versus $213 an acre foot, we very quickly recoup the construction costs, and, and this is financially a, a net positive for the city pretty quickly. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, maybe think about it as Chris was saying, that just to go and acquire these water rights, just to acquire, not even to pay for the actual oper, you know, the, the annual fee, was about $120 million. So day one, this pipe, that's why it's so, we're kind of becoming more urgent about the need to get this pipeline built, because every year that we are not taking this water is a missed opportunity, right? And so the, and as Mr. Thompson knows, knows, the, the growth and the demand for water in Southeast Mesa is unabating. I mean, it just keeps coming at us. And so we've got to be prepared to help some of these large manufacturing industrial groups who are coming to us now. We can meet their Phase One development plans, but what we're very concerned about is their Phase Two and Phase Three, and as well as the other developments. So day one, a $90 million investment in this pipeline, which will last for 50 years, is, is still less than the cost, the upfront cost to acquire, just to acquire rights of $120 million. And then there's the annual savings of $2 million a year for, because we get such a discount on this water, it's, it's significant for us. And frankly, just the fact that we'll have another source of water, an additional bucket of water in our portfolio is, is significant. And so then that kind of, the other way it kind of keeps paying this way as Chris was saying is now we, we can continue to grow our economic development base and bring more jobs and investment in Mesa, because we'll have this water to sell.
Great. And I know there's other questions, but just before I, yeah, from my perspective, we've been talking about this for a year or more, and the math is always just so lopsided. It, it's obvious that this is the, the smart thing to do. But a quick question, Chris. If we were, I know what we, we, there's a one acre foot or .8 acre foot exchange between us and the Gila River Community, which, which is a great win for them, a great win for us. But would it not be cheaper for us to, to, to go through the, the, the process of creating a pipeline and to get the effluent out to one of our treatment facilities like the Signal Butte Treatment Facility and, and just, and re-treat the effluent? Or is the, there, is that effluent, you just said, a, a quality of water that, that doesn't make it eligible without additional, you know, money being spent on it? You know, we're, we're better off getting .8 acre feet of CAP water versus one acre foot of effluent, correct?
Right, that, so that is a great question. And so to answer your question, so the quality of the reused water, it's, it's suitable for agriculture and irrigation and things like that. If you want to get it to the point where it's potable, considered potable and delivered to customers, the Signal Butte just doesn't have the, the technology lineup that the state requires, because right now, in fact, in Arizona, there's been talks about, well, nobody has done this yet. Nobody has taken reuse and advanced-treated it and delivered it to customers. There is, there are provisions for that, but we would need significantly more advanced technology at our water treatment plants to get to the quality that the state requires. And that would be a really big cost. And I don't think we have the property to do that as well.
Got it. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I thought, I thought San Diego was using reclaimed water, treated reclaimed water for their, for their potable water. This is the question I asked, asked Mr. Brady about it a while back, and, or last week, actually, not a while back, but last week. And it, and it has to do with, it, it kind of links in with what the mayor was saying. And, you know, we, we are able to put water into the ground to replenish aquifers, and we have the ability then to sink a recovery well anywhere in the city, and it doesn't have to be in the same aquifer. So the county would actually allow us to, to use any water that we were to, so we could literally do a one-for-one instead of a one-for .8 transfer if we, if we chose to go that route, where we could put, for every acre foot of water we put in the ground, we could take an acre of water out of the ground in a recovery well, so that you could actually transfer that water from point A to point B and not have to be in the same aquifer. But my question also is, is there excess capacity of water within the other areas of the city that we could utilize, that's not being used, that we could utilize for the, you know, for example, we just, we just turned away a, a business that, a, a business that wanted to be here. It was about an $18 billion investment in Mesa that they were bringing 2,000 jobs with an average starting salary of $70,000 a year, and we told them to go away because we didn't have the water. And it ju, it, it kills me when we're turning away jobs for our, for our citizens. You know, we said in our strategic planning session last year, we said we no longer wanted to be a community known as, as being a bedroom community, but we wanted to bring jobs. And we're limited by obviously our resources, but if there's a way that we can get to a yes, I would sure love to find it, because there's, there's jobs that are waiting for our citizens out there that we're turning away.
Let, let me clarify that issue. This was a proposal that didn't even have land. It didn't even have a contract for the land it was supposed to go to. So when we said, all we said was, we wouldn't be able to meet all of the water requirements at their peak period. So they would have to come up with some alternative way to cool their systems. So again, let me remind the council, we've entered into a 99-year agreement with the Gila Rivers. They have been waiting for years for us to deliver this water. So we have, now it wasn't me, but we have a previous generation that made a commitment to the Gila's to deliver this water. We have, do, we do not know of any other methodology that is more beneficial to the city than to deliver this effluent through this pipe that we don't have to treat. Again, we've treated it, but once we put it in the pipe, it's just delivered right to the Gila's, and it doesn't have to go through any more storage. We don't have to build additional wells to, to bring it back out. It's a, it's a, we already have the turnouts for the CAP water that, at Signal Butte and Brown Road. So in effect, we already have significant amount of the infrastructure in place for this arrangement and for this commitment that we've made to the Gila's. Everything we're talking about, we could look at it in addition to or outside of this agreement, but right now, what we're suggesting to the council is we have an obligation to deliver this water under our agreement, and what, that's what we're really focused on is, is coming up. We can't, we don't know of a cheaper source of water, even with this investment of $90 million, that we could secure at this time without other significant investments. Because remember, this water doesn't have to go through our treatment facilities to be, we have to, we get the raw water that we can run through our treatment facilities where we already have the infrastructure. The effluent, we can just send on downhill to the Gila's, so.
All right. Thank you. Council, other questions on this? Mr. Freeman, and then Vice Mayor Duff.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of questions. First of all, I think Mayor and Councilmember Thompson, what you've talked about, different ways to mitigate water, is we may be doing that in the future. I, I see that sustainable. However, I think our priority is to get this contractual agreement down to the grick and get the recovery. The raw, raw water is what we need for the development. You know, the southeast part of Mesa does not have the aquifers that the northwest or the northeast part of Mesa, probably the downtown area have, and that's meaning the well sites. And, and that just because you sink a recovery well and you're going to infuse that water in the aquifer, does that allow you to move that water over from, say, northwest Mesa to southeast Mesa? So those are some of the things I think staff might be worried about. And leverage that water, where do you put your water in? What canal system to move water and be able to use it at our treatment plants? But my, my goal would be is to help staff find a sustainable solution for our water. And one of the things you pointed out, and I think you need to emphasize, is the value of the water, the value of the savings, and the timeframes now to get it down to where it needs to be. And also, it is very interesting to me now, today, we can take water from the northwest part of Mesa and push it to the very southeast part, or, you know, the, I, I, the grick, the Gila River Indian Community, we're putting that water, what, about 30 miles, maybe 35 miles south here. So, I mean, we're moving water, the mobility and the ability to move that water from northwest Mesa to the very south part of Gilbert or Chandler, wherever that boundary is, to grick is phenomenal to me. I guess the other question is how are we going to pay for it? Are we going to bond it? Are we going to ask the water department to do some due diligence? And, you know, I guess those are things we're going to have to work out. But to me, I think the value of the water, the water savings, selecting the correct pipeline route to get it down there and connecting to our existing water lines, it's already there. We just need to move forward and get this done sooner than later. So that'd be my comments. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Do you have an answer to the question of where's this $90 million coming from?
Well, Mayor, it's, it's like all the major infrastructure in our water system, whether it's a treatment plant or whether it's pipe, transmission pipes, this is something we do, you know, every time we do a CIP project. So ultimately, yes, it would most likely be, a portion of it would be through some future bond. As you heard though today, the design on this, I'm, unfortunately, I can't tell Vice Mayor Duff, this is a 2022 project. This is much further out. So it's a four-year, five-year, four-year project, I guess. So we still have the decision or when the timing of the issuance of the bonds is probably a couple of years out, just because we need, was it 18 months for design?
Yeah.
Eighteen months. So another year or so, we'll be able to come back in our total, it'll be, it would be part of a larger CIP project, I would imagine, for the water resources with other improvements. We know we're already under design for the next expansion of Signal Butte, so that's going to have to come to council at some point. So all those would probably be, I don't know if they'd be all done at the same time, but just like any other major project in the water resources, we would talk about future revenue bonds to support it.
Thank you. I think this is a, a, a perfect example of why we issue bonds. People question the amount of bond debt that we have as a community, and then the answer for that is because we're so heavily involved in utilities, and utilities require, you know, significant capital improvement projects. If you explain the math, you know, behind this project to anyone who has a basic, you know, concept of arithmetic, it becomes a no-brainer, and, and they see the wisdom in issuing bonds over 20 years to pay the $90 million so we can save an amount that's far in excess of that. So, so this is, I, I think, a great example when we get questioned on why do we have bond debt? Why do we do that? Councilmember, I'm sorry, dang it. Vice Mayor Duff.
That's, that's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the explanation. I was concerned about how we're going to pay for it as well. And then I would assume would be on the '22 bond election. That would be our next opportunity is on the '22 election, I assume. And then we would have to work very quickly in order to meet the demands. That, the southeast area is growing very, very quickly. The demands are upon us. However, I have to question, do we look at limiting our growth there? Yes, we can gain jobs from these high-water employers and such like that, but we're also gaining huge populations in the housing that's going on. So even though we're gaining jobs, we're gazing, you know, our ratios remain the same, and then we're against these costs of providing a limited resource. I am concerned also, how are we going to have an assured supply on the exchange? Is there any danger of not having that opportunity if we make the investment?
Is the CIP going to run out of water if we send our effluent to the Gila's, guys?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the answer to that question is, the, the tribal community through the adjudication was allocated a very large chunk of Colorado River water, which is delivered via the CAP Canal. This agreement makes so much sense to them because they don't really have free access to the canal, and so they're really, the areas are really wanting to build out for agriculture and take this effluent is in the southern reaches, you know, in South Chandler and Gilbert area. So they have a large supply which will not run out. Yes, there could be shortages on the Colorado River, which they would be shorted, but that just highlights how important this exchange is for us. If Mesa's shorted as well, and we're delivering this effluent, and we're getting maybe a lesser exchange rate because of the shortage on the Colorado, that bolsters what we lost based on our subcontract. So it really builds our portfolio, and there really isn't a jeopardy of losing that at this point in time.
Brian, though, the water that we're receiving in exchange has the highest priority, correct?
Correct.
I mean, other, other allocations could be cut back, but they are at the top of the priority list. So we're, we're in a, this is going to be some of the most secure water. We could, I mean, again, going to value of this water, this is probably some of the most high-value water that we can access. Is that fair?
That's a fair statement, yes.
Okay, thank you. I know Mr. Heredia had a question.
Yeah, two questions. One is the, the partnership and the working relationship with the Gila River Indian Community. Just curious on how do we, how do we, how do we work with them? Do they have the infrastructure to take all this water based on what, if, if this passed and we're able to send them all this water? So just curious on the, on the relationship with, with the Gila River Indian Community there. And then, second question, the stat that was mentioned as far as what, what we're currently sending over, how much that equates on the credits for us to take in the CAP water? What's, what is the, the amount that that increase will provide us for, you know, you know, homes and businesses out, out in the southeast area? Is there, is there something that, is there a, a way to quantify that or the, the amount additional that we, we receive, the benefits for our city in the future?
So let me, I'll let Brian answer most of this question, but just so you know, Mayor and Council, the mayor and some of the staff, we met with the governor of the Gila River Community two, three months ago and talked about this project to make sure that they understood that we were moving forward. It was all positive on their side. They would love, there's lots of areas that they would like to expand, but they don't have, the water's not available. So they are aware of our timeline, and so they, obviously, on their side, will be making their, their, on their, obviously, the infrastructure, the irrigation infrastructure, they'll have to begin making that plans. But Brian, any other conversations you've had with them?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, Mesa has a very good relationship with the tribal community. We are in contact with them monthly, and we meet quite occasionally. This is a win-win for both communities, Mesa and the tribal community. As far as, as the agreement goes, as Mr. Brady had pointed out, this is a 99-year agreement with the option to continue on beyond that. Right now, we're only receiving about 6,100, 7,100 acre feet via the exchange. We're supposed to be delivering by 2029 up to 29,400 acre feet of water, which we get just a little less than 24,000 back. And so right now, we're, we're not really maximizing the use of this agreement. Thankfully, the agreement has a clause in there, as long as the wastewater is available, that's what we would deliver. Unfortunately, in Southeast Mesa, what you're seeing with the demographics is rather than a bunch of rooftops going in where we receive quite a bit of that wastewater back that we're able to treat and then deliver to the Gila's via the exchange, we're seeing some larger businesses going larger businesses going in that use a considerable amount of water, but we don't get a lot of that water back as far as wastewater. So it's beginning to tip the scales a little bit. And so that's the, the importance of this pipeline is that we're able to bring in this resource from northwest Mesa, which ordinarily we would recharge in the Salt River Basin, which has been down for a year and a half because it was washed out. And so we're basically dumping this into the riverbed and getting no beneficial use of it. And just to touch a little bit on what Councilmember Thompson was alluding to is, yes, once we, uh, once we complete our obligation with the Gila River Indian Community, any excess reclaimed water we have available, we could look at other recharge facilities, maybe recovery wells. The last time we, we reviewed the commodity costs of our water portfolio, recovered effluent, affi you treat it, you've recharged it, and then you have to pump it back out of the ground again, was about a hundred and fifty dollars an acre foot. And so what we're getting here, this resource, is it's been treated and we deliver it, we don't have to touch it again, and we get a nice Colorado River supply at our treatment plants back in exchange. So there's going to be opportunities down the road, it won't be now, to possibly market any excess reclaimed water that we would have, but there will be opportunities, whether with Gilbert, Chandler, or some of the, uh, local golf courses along the route, so.
Hey, great, Council, any additional questions on this? All right, I, I see that, that this is not up as an action item, but I think, uh, it's clearly apparent from, from our, what's been presented and, and Council's, uh, questions on this that we're enthusiastic and, and Mr. Brady ain't looking forward to seeing this happen as, as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mayor. So we, we'll continue to proceed forward and moving into the design phase and obviously over the several, next several months, we'll be coming back to council, along with other CIP projects and talking about, uh, the funding. We are looking at some alter, uh, some different approaches to funding, you still using bonds, but as opposed to having these very large bond elections, we, we think there's some more efficient ways to do that, so we'll be talking about that with the Council in the near future also. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, the next item on our agenda is, uh, item two B, that's to hear a presentation and discuss the city's fireworks ordinance. I know a lot of us have received, uh, emails, uh, e- every Fourth of July and every New Year's Eve, uh, there's a lot of questions asked in our community, uh, about, uh, what the, the rules are and why they are or are not enforced as well as they could be. So, uh, this is a, a timely topic. I know Mr. Freeman and others, uh, have, uh, tried to be very responsive to a lot of the complaints that we've gotten from our, from our residents. So, uh, we're looking forward to, to getting updated on this, Mr. Brady.
Good morning, um, Mayor Giles, Vice Mayor Duff, Council. Um, my name is Steve Ward. I'm a deputy chief with the Fire and Medical Department and currently the, uh, fire marshal. And with me is Kevin Bush. He is our assistant fire marshal. He's been with us for a long time and so he has a great deal of knowledge about, uh, the history of this throughout the years here, uh, in the city. And, uh, I want to thank you very much for allowing us to, to come and, and give you this brief about this very important, uh, issue about the sale and the use of consumer fireworks here in the city of Mesa, and we're going to do it this morning, uh, from the, uh, scope and perspective of, of the Fire and Medical Department operations as, uh, pertains to, to this, this issue. We do have a few slides for you. Uh, we have, uh, four slides, so we're, we're not going to beat you up too bad on, on the slides this morning. But, uh, what we want to do first of all is go ahead and start with a little bit of, uh, a background on, on this that may be helpful for you. So the, the Arizona State Legislature, uh, by statute, when that statute is, um, A R S thirty-six dash sixteen oh one, has stated and, a- it states, has deemed fireworks a matter of statewide concern and, uh, which kind of provides the guardrails for us here at the local level and, and the fire departments for how we, we deal with this issue. Um, and, uh, for, for us here at the city of Mesa, we, we subscribe to the safe and the sane consumer fireworks per that statute, and that kind of, that statute really does give us the guardrails on, on how we, we do things. Um, so what we're going to do is we're going to talk about what permissible fireworks are and how we, as the Fire and Medical Department, deal with it at the point of sale, and, and Kevin's going to give you a brief about that. And, um, and, and we'll obvi- obviously give you opportunities to ask us questions and, and, uh, we'll address those for you. So definition-wise, consumer fireworks means small fireworks devices that contain restricted amounts of pyrotechnic composition, uh, designed primarily to produce visible and audible effects by, by combustion. That is the technical definition. What that really means is, is what, what we're allowed to, to buy and use here in the city, um, is produces sparks, it produces color, and it produces noise, and it may produce smoke. What it does not produce are explosions, and what it is not designed to do is, uh, become aerial and go above the ground. Um, those are examples of, of, uh, fireworks devices that are, are by statute at state level, not legal and permitted fireworks use here in the city also. Um, and those, so examples of, of, uh, legal permitted fireworks here that you would see are things like sparklers. You would see those cone-shaped things that, that the kids like to see on, that sit on the ground and produce sparks, um, the spinners and the, what we used to call smoke, smokepods when we were, we were kids. What you'll notice is none of those detonate and none of those, uh, rise above the ground. So per, per the statute thirty-six dash sixteen oh ones, items that are not included as permissible consumer-grade fireworks include firecrackers, bottle rockets, skyrockets, um, obviously anything that is aerial devices, um, Roman candles and, uh, shell devices or the large type stuff that you see like the, uh, the tube fire devices and the professional-grade fireworks, which is kind of what we see in the Celebration of Freedom, uh, presentations that we see. So you see a common, common theme here is that, that the non allowable illegal fireworks, um, generally explode and they're generally in the air. And those are, are reserved for our professionals and for our, uh, large-scale productions. So wh- what, one of the things that we do, the Fire and Medical Department, is that, uh, several times a year, and we're going to go over this on, on the fourth slide and, and just give you a heads up that a couple of the dates on that fourth slide, we're gonna, we're gonna modify as we go here, uh, because they're, my fault, they're one day off, and, uh, Kevin, Kevin caught that for me. But, uh, we're going to talk a little bit about what we do in the Fire and Medical Department at the sales point of the kiosk, and Kevin's going to cover that, what that workflow looks like for us and, and how we, we deal with that at the point of sale in the city. So Kevin, you want to talk about that?
Good morning, everyone. So how it works in the city of Mesa, when folks want to do business selling safe and sane legal fireworks, is they have to apply, uh, for a permit through a seller. Uh, that permit, along with a number of required documents, is reviewed by the Fire Prevention Office and that is approved. Once they set up their kiosk and once they have all of the inventory onsite and all of the fire protection features onsite, a Mesa fire inspector is sent to the site to inspect the inventory, to ensure it's all safe and sane, and to inspect the site. Only then are they issued a permit that they must post for the duration of the sales period. Fire inspectors can, uh, under the Mesa Fire Code, do drop-in follow-up checks, just to be sure that the fireworks remain safe and sane and that there isn't anything illegal being sold.
So Mayor, as you, uh, alluded to, that, that every year during certain times of the year is when, um, council members may start getting phone calls or, or those of us, uh, with the fire department or our partners at the police department may start getting phone calls. So we'll talk a little bit about, uh, per A R S thirty-six dash sixteen oh one, which dates are permissible for use. Uh, and there, there actually has been a, a little bit of a change to that, uh, after the first of the year. Uh, so I'm going to have, have Kevin talk a little bit about that, and he's also going to talk about, uh, the history of the, the Diwali celebration and what, what, that is now sunsetted, but, but that was in effect. So Kevin, you want to go ahead and take care?
Sure. Um, so the, there are permissible sales and use dates in A R S statute thirty-six sixteen oh one. We hold, uh, people that set these kiosks up in Mesa to those dates. Use of consumer permissible fireworks then is limited to the dates that you see under that. May fourth through May sixth covers the Cinco de Mayo holiday. We mandate that sales not begin until the dates that you see there and that they must end on the date after. And all tent, cargo storage, and remaining inventory have to be removed from the site that was approved. Uh, Diwali, as, as Chief mentioned, Diwali was interesting. That's a holiday that comes to America from India. And two years ago, Arizona State Fire Marshals, uh, organization, uh, was asked to recognize that for a two-year period that sunsetted at the end of the year. Uh, those dates were never entered into A R S thirty-six sixteen oh one, uh, because they celebrate that holiday on a sliding scale. It is not the same days every year. But that's now sunsetted, so the dates that you see, uh, on the slide today are what is legitimate in Arizona and in Mesa.
Mayor and Council, if I could just also add, uh, and I think it was described as the state statutes provide guardrails for municipalities, and I think that's very nuanced, and in fact, I'm going to use that in the future. Actually, that's a kind way of saying it. I'm, I'm going to be more blunt about it. Um, the, the state and we, and I know the Council's familiar with this, but I, I, I think many citizens aren't familiar with, um, the fact that the state legislature passes a number of statutes that preempt and preclude municipalities from passing, um, legislation. This, this one does it in a very unique way, and it says basically that municipalities, you can do A, B, C, D, and E, and that's it. And, and really the, sort of the guts of it are all within A, B, and C, and, uh, the city of Mesa has done that. And so, you know, to the extent that the state has allowed us to, uh, regulate and prohibit fireworks, uh, the city of Mesa has done that. Um, and so, um, they've sort of constrained us within this, within this realm, um, in a sort of unique way, but the ultimate effect is, is that they have precluded us from, uh, passing additional legislation.
Thank you. Uh, Council, and comments or questions on this item? Mr. Luna?
Uh, thank you, Fire Marshals, for giving that explanation. Uh, as, as you can imagine, I'm sure all my colleagues on Council will get a lot of complaints, especially during Fourth of July and, and, uh, New Year's Eve holidays. Uh, we have a number of, we have had several complaints, uh, citing that individuals go up to Brown, Brown Mountain over on Brown and Ellsworth and shoot off, launch fireworks from that location. And so we have a number of neighbors and residents in that area that constantly complain. And, you know, it's a difficult time because if you think of our public safety personnel, uh, they're out roaming the streets, they're on duty, uh, because want to make sure that we're a safe community, uh, there could be potentially, uh, drunk drivers, and then you have this headed onto that, which is really a burden to our public safety personnel. And I find it really frustrating that we really can't do a whole lot about it. But I appreciate that you're going to be going to some of these vendors and looking, uh, spot checking and make sure that they're selling the right, uh, the right, uh, things that they can use, uh, that are sa- somewhat safe for, for, uh, for kids and, uh, which is questionable. But, um, are you working with jurisdictions outside of, uh, the city of Mesa to ensure that, um, uh, you know, people aren't going to, let's say, uh, other jurisdictions outside of Mesa and bringing in, uh, possible explosives, uh, fireworks that are launched, uh, so that they don't come into the city of Mesa?
Yeah, thank you for that, Councilmember Luna. Um, yeah, we, we do have a very close working relationship with our, our, uh, law enforcement partner here in Mesa P D here in, uh, in Mesa, and I'll let Kevin kind of brief you on, on what our, um, bordering, uh, agencies do also.
We have partnered with, uh, Mesa Police, as Chief stated, and they've been very helpful to us in the past. They are provided the final list of permitted kiosks in the city of Mesa so that they are aware what is legal and what may not be. Um, through our connection with, uh, Valley Fire Marshals and with Arizona State, uh, Fire Marshals, we do share information such as this. And then in conjunction with State Fire Marshal's office, uh, we've had, uh, some discussions about how to collectively proceed on these issues. The biggest issue for all of us, uh, is that there's really no way to control the influx of illegal fireworks coming into the state and coming into our city of Mesa.
Thank you, Council. Uh, Mr. Freeman?
You know, I remember when Chief Ward was just a rookie on the Mesa Fire Department. Hey, uh, Chief, thank you and, and Mr. Bush about your information. I think what we really are having a problem with is the illegal use of fireworks. We, we get the code, uh, I've talked to Mr. Smith about perhaps some legislative, uh, working legislative and just say, you know, why is the state legislature not allowing cities to create their own ordinances and codes? And probably because the fireworks, people have great lobbyists, I don't know, but, uh, I would like to maybe ask if we could work with our local state legislators and see about some change in the legislation, Mayor. Uh, but Chief Ward, I was going to ask about, do we, do we work in, on the undercover work with our Mesa Police Department for the illegal sales and distribution of fireworks? Because the complaints that we're getting are obviously the aerial, and it's almost year-round, and some of my district, I get complaints. So that's Craigslist, social media, or any other places that can sell the illegal use of fireworks because the complaints are not coming in to what we've authorized in our city and our current ordinance. So what, uh, can you give me some ideas if you're doing any undercover, I'll use the word undercover work, it may not be that called that? Chief Ward?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Freeman. Uh, actually, with, with our partners from, from the Mesa Police Department, we, we do work i- in conjunction with them, and, uh, we do follow up on any information or leads that we get, uh, regarding the possibility that somebody is selling, uh, that has brought it in from some other jurisdiction. Usually it's a private party bringing it in from where you can buy it. And if we get information that online or private sales are happening, we do work with our P, uh, Police Department partners to follow up on that, and we have had success on that in, in the past.
So my question back maybe to Mr. Brady is, is there a point that we could, uh, create some type of pre-task force to kind of, uh, work on areas of the community? I know Mr. Smith and I have had this conversation, it's almost impossible, but as complaints come in, do we push that over to our community action officer or, uh, work with our respective, uh, districts? I know it's a low priority call. Uh, however, I did have a home burn up in my area, uh, this past, uh, New Year's, uh, was totally gutted, and it was unnecessary, it was due to fireworks. So I, I, I guess I'm kind of in, in a conundrum here. How can we best leverage, uh, giving our police officers the correct information because I'm getting constituents saying, well, the police officer doesn't understand the Mesa ordinance, and here I have an aerial firework over here, but yet they didn't see it, and there's, so it's just, it's kind of all over the place. How we can make it more concise and meet the needs of our constituents? Mr. Brady, I'll probably leave that to you and Mr. Pombier.
Okay. Well, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Freeman, I, I think the question really becomes, I, I, you know, certainly we can make sure all the police officers are informed about the ordinance, but I think for, as a police officer, once they get a complaint, it usually after the fact. Um, and, or, you know, because really the, I think the most of, the only way they really can enforce this is in the act of seeing somebody actually lighting the firework and, and making that association. I think the challenge, I'm sure the frustration, and believe me, I, I appreciate this, is, um, residents hearing this bombardment all night long, and they know it's coming from the next block or somewhere over. or somewhere over in their neighborhood, and they can call the police, even if the police, again, were getting overwhelmed with the calls that night. But I think there's very little they can do once they, you know, it's a very difficult position to be in because it's already happened. The fireworks have already been lit, it's gone up in the air. By the time we would show there, I think people just standing around in the street isn't going to be enough for us to enforce it. So I think that's our challenge. Certainly, we can continue to collaborate or have discussions with police and fire, but I think the largest, if we can't stop the sales, if there's no way to put a restriction on sales, enforcement of actually igniting the firework, I think, is very problematic. But certainly, we can see what we can do. But again, many of these holidays, we are on, you know, we're doing DUI enforcement also. So it's just kind of a matter of how do we put all the resources together, try to figure out a way to effectively enforce this? I think it's a conundrum we all have.
Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Mayor, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. I know Councilmember Beredia, and then Councilmember Spillsbury, and then Vice Mayor Duff. Frankie?
Yeah. Question on the fines. Are we maxed out on the amount of fines that we can do for any retailer and also person using illegal fireworks?
So Mayor and Councilmember Beredia, we're not. We could actually bring that back. If you'd like us to look at, sort of, looking at increasing the fines and looking at other jurisdictions, we could look at that.
What's the current fines that we currently have?
I believe for the person that's using the fireworks illegal, I think the first offense is $75. The fines for someone selling is a higher fine. I don't remember it off the top of my head, but we could look at increasing those on both sides of it, both the sale side and the use side.
I would say that could be an option here to look at, you know, if we tapped out on other parts of what we can do is increasing the fines, and maybe that's a deterrent. I doubt it, but, you know, something that we can do to increase both on the retailer side and then the resident side if they're using illegal fireworks.
We can look at that, bring that back to council.
Thank you.
Councilmember Spillsbury?
Yeah, just unfortunately, I think especially on New Year's Eve and 4th of July, everyone knows it's a free-for-all. Everyone knows that everyone's going to do it, and the police are too busy to deal with it. And so, I mean, on New Year's Eve, we had from 8:00 PM till 3:00 AM at least 15 people in my neighborhood doing fireworks. And when I read that paragraph of all of the things that aren't permissible, that's what it all is. Every single one of those things, that's what they're doing. The whole, I mean, as you know, if you drive around Mesa on any of those nights, the whole, you can't even hardly see, it looks like we're covered in fog. The sky is full of smoke. I mean, and so then you have all the people who have PTSD and dogs, and I mean, and so maybe it is only those two nights of the year, but everyone knows nothing's going to happen to you if you do that. There's no enforcement. I mean, I know a lot of people that spend thousands of dollars and hours doing this exact thing, and they know nothing's going to happen to them. So until we can do anything enforcement-wise, I don't know how we can change that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes, I have a question as far as, are people allowed to, whether they're legal or illegal, 24/7? Is there, we have a quiet time after 10:00 PM, don't we? But still, even now in my neighborhood, they're going off at all hours of the night. Is there any time limit in which they can be set off?
So Vice Mayor Duff, per ARS 361601, I'm not quite sure what the time limit is. I'll have to get back with you on that. I'm not sure if there is a time limit, just the days, but I'll have to get, we'll look and get back with you on that.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor, though, I think, you know, you raised a good point that maybe as this conversation, I'm thinking of sort of ways in which we might be able to do some enforcement. And I think where you're going is, because the statute and the ordinance doesn't have a time limit for the fireworks, but is there another option as far as enforcement regarding noise violation? And should we look at that as a more realistic and possible violation? And so let us look at that, and maybe we need to look at modifying our noise ordinance to help facilitate mitigating this problem.
Yes, I think that could be an option to do that, and I'm in agreement with Councilmember Beredia of increasing the fines and do some public service announcements regarding responsibilities, what's legal, what's illegal. I think a lot of people who set them off don't even know what they're setting off is illegal. I don't know where they buy them, but as Councilmember Spillsbury pointed out, that the air quality is just horrible, and we know those are the air explosion devices. So, and I would be in support of also talking to the Arizona League of Cities and what we can do if other cities have these same concerns, that we could lobby together in order to change the laws or at least minimize the allowance on these fireworks. I don't see any benefit. I think they're an enforcement problem, waste of resources for our police department as well as, you know, pets, PTSD, and other problems. It's wildly out of control, and I think we have to work with other cities and maybe do something at the state level in order to get it under control. In the meantime, we can look at noise ordinance after 10:00 PM and increasing fines. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I share the same frustration as everybody else. Good luck. I mean, all we're asking staff to do is to commit more time to doing things that unless the person is caught in the act, like Manager Brady said, there's nothing that we can really do. From an enforcement standpoint, the officer has to catch the person actually lighting off or sending the aerial into, or lighting the mortar or what have you. So they actually have to be caught in the act of using an illegal firework. And, you know, and honestly, our officers are, you know, out on domestic violence calls and DUI calls and all these other calls that personally I feel are probably more important than trying to track down somebody that's choosing an aerial firework. But I share the same frustration, but I don't want to put more, I don't want to put more onus on staff to come up with solutions when we just can't enforce it. I mean, it goes back to the same conversation we had with code enforcement and those little, you know, the signs and everything else that we were talking about, what, eight months ago? If you're not going to enforce it, then why worry about, you know, putting the law on the books? You know, it just, again, I share the same frustration. I just don't want to create more work for staff and come up with ordinances and stuff that we just aren't going to enforce because, A, we don't have the people, and B, there's more priority calls that are coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Council, other comments on this issue?
I'll just add, everything's been said, but not everyone has said it, I guess. So I'll just add a couple of quick comments. I think Mr. Smith nailed it when he said that we're preempted by the state on this. And so for all the folks in our community that are expressing their frustration with our council and our police department, you know, I hate to pass the buck, but this is, there's not a lot we can do. I mean, as Mr. Smith indicated, we are as regulated at a city level as we can be, given the guardrails that the state have put on us. Once they label this an issue of statewide concern, that preempts the city from doing more. So I think, I don't remember who it was, maybe Vice Mayor Duff indicated, maybe where we take this battle to is the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. We need to adopt a resolution, join with the other 91 cities and towns, asking the legislature to be mindful of the problems that this is causing in our community. All of us, you know, lie in bed, and here are the aerial explosions, you know, on these nights. So it's, the problem is obvious, but the solution is not because the solution has to be initially crafted at the State House as opposed to in our city council meeting. So I'm going to suggest we put this on our agenda for the, for the state league, adopt a resolution, and make sure that our, for those in the community that feel passionate about this, I would encourage you to focus your passion on your legislators because that's where this issue can be addressed. Vice Mayor Duff?
I was wondering if we could have Neighborhood Services post on their social media an awareness to let people know you cannot set off fireworks any longer, they're still going off, and make some awareness about what the law is, and so we can at least minimize it immediately. I still have fireworks going off every night in my neighborhood. I can't identify where it is, but I don't think people know that they've heard them over the holidays so much. I think they think they can just keep on. I don't know. I don't know. We need to get it stopped, though.
Thank you. Council, any other comments on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, the next item on our agenda is item three, that's current event summary, including meetings and conferences attended. I know we've had a lot going on in the past few days and week. Who would like to begin? Councilmember Luna?
Thank you, Mayor. Let me find it real quick here. Okay, so on Thursday, I attended Empowered and Entertained Latina Virtual Event held by Chicanos para la Causa, where we celebrate the new Corporation Commissioners, Ana Tabar and Lee Marcus Peterson. So that's a real honor for, they both won statewide elections, so I was able to participate and watch that. This Tuesday, I attended an Aleo Program membership meeting to set the agenda for this coming year. On Wednesday, I continued to meet with a project that we're working at Falconville in collaboration with Boeing. And yesterday, I attended my last IDEA Museum Foundation meeting and was able to join Councilmember Spillsbury, who will be taking my place. And so I want to thank the museum for allowing me to serve them for these past seven years. And then yesterday, I was able to take some pictures at six elementary schools in my district in partnership with MPS to hopefully increase enrollment, number of students attending those schools. So we're trying to work and promote our wonderful schools here in the city of Mesa. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Luna. You ought to take a nap. You've been busy. Vice Mayor Duff?
Yes, thank you. I've also attended, visited several of the elementary schools in my district to encourage the enrollment. So go Edison Eagles, Lowell Road Runners, Franklin Firebirds, and Keller Cougars. We'll see you at school. And I'll have some photos posted on my Facebook page today. I'd also like to take a moment, a personal privilege, to thank Sunny O'Rourke, Executive Director of the IDEA Museum, for her 15 years dedicated to the phenomenal growth of the IDEA Museum, starting from the Arizona Museum of Youth, known as Amy, to what it is today, nurturing the minds of hundreds of thousands of children and engaging those families. Her energy and passion will be missed, and I want to wish her the best in her retirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have to say amen to your comments about the IDEA Museum and Sunny. It's been a much beloved institution in our community, and so Sunny's really left a mark on our community in a very positive way, and we appreciate her at her retirement. Council, other comments? Hearing none, I'll just say that I'm anxious for us to acknowledge that we celebrated Martin Luther King Day on Monday of this week. And obviously, months ago, we came to the realization that this was, we have a great tradition in the city of Mesa, it's been really one of the few spots in the state that has an annual MLK celebration. And I think we were all anxious to see that not be interrupted, you know, with COVID. And so the MLK Committee and our city staff and our Human Relations Advisory Board really went to work to think of, how do we continue the tradition of honoring this holiday in spite of the limitations presented by COVID and really the prohibition against having the traditional live events that we enjoy? So I was proud of the way that, in spite of our health limitations, we were able to celebrate MLK Day on Monday. The virtual presentation that we partnered with other cities on was very high quality, and in some ways, I hope we can keep some of the elements of the way we celebrated this year going forward because it was really such a positive and well-done event. So thank you to Andrea and the others in the city that worked so hard on that event. Also, under this item, I just wanted to welcome Councilmember Beredia back to this meeting. We acknowledged earlier this week that we've had over 400,000 deaths in our country from the COVID pandemic. And it's progressed to the point that all of us on this call have been touched by this illness, either personally or in our family. And so I just, I don't want to let it go unnoticed that one of our colleagues was very ill with COVID the past few weeks, and he's been in our thoughts and prayers. And it's just very good to see you back, Frankie. We wish you and your family well as you continue to come back to good health. And it's just a poignant reminder to all of us of how impactful this illness is and how, in spite of the fact that we are now thankfully, as a city and as a society, beginning to experience the benefits of the shots, we need to continue to be very vigilant because we currently are at the very worst of this pandemic in our community. So let's do all we can to get through this, hopefully just the last, you know, several months left before we can see some light at the end of the tunnel. Council, other comments or questions? Hearing none, Mr. Brady, what does the schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. We will be meeting on Monday, the 25th. We'll have an early start time. As council recognized, we have pushed, the executive session that was scheduled for today will be on Monday before the actual council meeting. So we expect an early start, probably around 5:00. So if you'll just confirm that when you look at the agenda that goes out, but we'll see you on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. So as Mr. Brady just noted, we had initially agendized an executive session for today that's been rescheduled for next Monday. That being the case, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting, Council? Thank you, Mr. Luna, seconded by Councilmember Duff. Please unmute your microphones. All in favor of adjourning this meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.